Being that it's IC six o'clock. So I'm gonna call to order the village board of trustees for the village of Belleville. Monday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. But the allegiance.
That's what you do.
That's what you do. In the way of the United States of America. To the Republic of the United States, our nation under God, in its law, with our Christian trust.
Hold on, please.
Press and service.
Here.
Huskies Bana.
Here.
Bonger.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
Michael Kraut.
Here.
Asmar.
Here.
Piglet.
Here.
Uh, was the meeting posted?
It was posted. Compared by law.
What participation? Right here, Thomas, to three minutes. And make sure to check in with the view.
What? You can go then. I'm like open for, sorry, real quick, if I do have a hand raised online, but I need you to write your full name as your name online. If you want to be able to comment. Sorry, I've had anything else. Do this online, sorry.
No.
Oh, okay. There. Hi, good evening. My name is Anthony Shad, at zero six South Grant Street, and also the chair of the Community Development Authority. I'm just gonna bring back the purpose of the CDA has long held that quote, the undertaking of programs and projects for land elimination and prevention, slum clearance and prevention, urban renewal and redevelopment and community development will encourage well-planned, integrated, stable, safe and health helpful neighborhoods. The provision of helpful homes, a decent living environment, adequate places for employment for residents, and an increase in the general property tax base, village, and quote. This is why as chair, I was surprised to learn that at the village board meeting on November third, the decision to pursue purchasing one West Main Street was discussed and approved using discretionary funds. This move interrupts and undermines future commercial corridor opportunities. Opportunities that are essential to any downtown that holds to be vibrant, appealing, and economically strong. Not only do I disagree with the proposal based on fundamental principles of what makes thriving downtown a healthy balance of retail, service, and restaurant uses among others, but I'm concerned with how this was done and the limited public input involved. Although the item appeared on the publicly posted village board agenda, the proposal never came before the Public Works and Properties Committee, which is tasked with identifying the best and optimal uses of public facilities. Nor did it become uh before the CDA, which I chair. The mix of uses we aim for in any downtown, which I'm sure you've visited, are significantly disrupted by getting in another public facility in a small, high-density area already dominated by publicly-owned buildings. As someone who volunteered on the built environment committee during the UW extension-led visioning process in effort that successfully brought residential and business stakeholders together to articulate Belleville's long-term goals, I am frankly shocked that more energy went into organizing the number of people in that room to develop a visioning statement than it has gone into gathering public input into where to put city hall, village hall, excuse me, on a decision that is practically more significant than purchasing a new building. Thank you. I heard in the recording, your opposition during the meeting, listening to the recording was clear. You had concerns raised, and they were both valid and important. Unfortunately, the majority of the board's willingness to remove a private taxable property from the tax roll, especially for what is only described as a temporary solution lasting only ten and twenty years, reflects a disappointing lack of long-term vision. This decision is confusing and inefficient, especially given that meetings will still be held here on Vine Street. The building does not meet long-term functional needs. Rather than forcing village hall into an inferior location, I urge the board to consider creative alternatives in collaboration with others. Um, I will go into my details. These will all be on public record as I propose other um alternatives that I feel that have not been further examined. Um, as far as the pharmacy building goes, I want to stress my deep disappointment as a person involved in the CDA. When any building becomes available, it represents an opportunity for an entrepreneur or a small business owner to invest in Belleville, as we've seen so far. To bring creativity, service, and vitality to our downtown. Instead of stepping aside and encouraging private reinvestment, uh village is pursuing acquisition for its own use. We should have aggressively marketed this property from the moment it became vacant. I know we're looking at phones and not paying attention during public input. Um, website listings, including the creation of dedicated available properties pages, and outreach to business prospects. I would gladly sit with this work if staff is encumbered to do this, to do these duties. In closing, I strongly caution against making this short-term ill-considered investment for village hall. If a choice had to be made between relocating and reinvesting, I would prefer to see the village commit to improving the current building rather than relocating to the northwest corner of Main Street, the gateway to our downtown. Village Hall simply does not belong there, and as the village continues acquiring properties, we must ask ourselves, at what point will there be nothing left for the private sector? Thanks.
Thanks for coming.
I can't talk.
What I'm gonna bring up tonight is I see on the agenda that we're talking about the Remi Road property. Just as some history. Before the Francisus brought the Tullosus property, which is now known as the West High Bell West, Old City, et cetera. The developers, the very first one was Urban Luann Blau. They paid for their own infrastructure, roads, water, sewer. They believed that the taxpayers should not carry the burden of the infrastructure of a private enterprise. When Costco came to town in two thousand three and four, Costco had filled out the south side himself. Streets, water and sewer, sidewalks, you name it. Because the board at that time did not want the burden to be put on the taxpayers. When the Francisus and Fox bought the west side, it sat for ten years. April Little decided, and Kerry Kringel was our village board president, decided to jumpstart it by making it Kim district. Of course, the Francisus plead poverty. And so the infrastructure got put on the backs of the taxpayers, which now is being used to do projects on the west side. When I have someone like Petrie, Jeff Petrie, and Josh Petrie building out all this land, and the burden of the infrastructure is thrown on the backs of the taxpayers in this village, IC Red. The man's got more money than God might have. But no. The taxpayers are gonna pick up that whole project, infrastructure, water, sewer, streets, the whole nine yards. And I think that is just not right.
I think that's just not true.
Is Petrie picking it up?
Ian and Dr. Dyrus talk.
The second thing I wanna talk about is the sick time that our long-term employees are losing. That has been in place for thirty-five years. And many times it's used for maternity leave or for major surgery, something other than what people are using it for. You take sick time away, you take away demotivation. People are gonna use it whether they're sick or not. And I'd rather have them show up here and work than take the sick time. And I know it's a pain in the butt to trap. But it's better than nothing. Who's got their cell phone ring?
That's the chief's radio.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that, chief. Um. When Rhea Silvernail and Bill Icokra left the village to retirement.
Thirty seconds.
They were paid out. But we can't care visiting employees, their sick time or vacation time. You pay them away. All I got to say.
Oh, no, I'm not. I'm gonna probably speak later. Like I said, I have one hand online, but since I don't have a full name, leave it to your discretion if you want me to try.
You can hear them clearly and get their name.
Um. Is the TP person online that raising their hand? Did they want to make a comment?
Sorry, it's me. I didn't mean to raise my hand. It's Teresa. Um, I thought I put it down.
Okay, no problem. I can fix it.
Is it down?
I would, I would think put it down.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, don't worry. That's all I have.
Don't worry, okay.
Moving on, the consent agenda. All in, when the consent agenda is considered routine, it will be enacted in one motion. There will be no further discussion. These items must a board member requested. In which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered the first item after the approval of the consent agenda. Tonight, we have the village board meeting minutes from November third. Civic review software agreement and the appointment of Ashley Carpenter to the Community Development Authority.
Probably approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Gary, second by Shelley.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion passes. Welcome, Ashley. Village President's report. Rested after vacations, essentially, by report. Uh, staff reports, please.
Yeah, um, for the second time, we are gonna be doing a management team. So in kind of a spirit of collaboration, bringing in the engineers, the attorneys, a fire EMS, senior center with village staff, just to kind of go through all ongoing projects. Just make sure everybody's kind of on the same page on the leadership time. Team on just kind of all the projects, everything budget, just make sure everyone's on the same page as we go into holidays. So we try to do this quarterly, so that next one is tomorrow. Um, yeah, that's all I had. Nothing for us.
Yeah, the developers, all of them, which we currently have, in their own way, they install all the public infrastructure within the developers, pay for all of themselves. Uh, the, the very small amount of things that we pay for, we know that it's in large building agreements, you know, science, capital, something such, so.
Then why do we have a list of three to four million, um, water and sewer going all the way around so he can do nine steps? Hold on, please.
There's nothing going on.
Just, yeah.
Are you talking about the, the north side extension?
Pardon me?
The sewers? Yeah, you talked about the north side sewer extension.
Yes.
The most conservative of us, we got to that, it was one point eight million dollars, and the developer has verbally agreed to pay their share of that.
What year?
Uh, Kevin believes to be somewhere around twelve percent, but we don't know for sure yet.
Rested, it falls on the fact.
Uh, well, utilities would be accurate, but yeah. And that's an extension that would need to be done regardless of whether anything were to happen. We are maxed out for the size of the pipe we have going to the north. The pipe is undersized. That's all I have. Nothing.
Um, I, most of my report has been attached, especially if you're up for reelection. I would recommend you review that. I will just point out. Um, while the packets will be available, they'll be in next week. Um, for anybody running or wanting to run for trustee, packets can't be circulated until starting Monday, December first. Also included in the packet this year is the entire ethics commission of by the campaign finance report or like manual. Cause I think it's a good idea just to be aware of the rules. Um, it's something that they don't necessarily promote to clerks. And so I haven't had a chance to review it until this year. But, and I don't think anybody's out of compliance necessarily with the ethics commission. But I do want just, I feel like information is valuable, so um as elections heat up, I want everyone to be aware of that situation. So that will, that whole manual on campaign finance, maybe part of the packet this year along with all the other paperwork that's been previously. Um, available, and if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me as the filing officer. Looking forward to another great year of elections. We're gonna have a lot of really cool changes this year. Beyond this, this space is our polling place. Uh, we are attending manual book training for our um electronic poll books this week. And we're having our uh equipment updated and buying all new equipment, as you guys know, is a part of the capital. So we'll have a new calculator, which will be a much more efficient. So looking forward to facilitating those again. And that's all I've got.
I have a question.
Um, all is well at the library. No report tonight. I'm sorry. My toe skipped. Um, is it that? I don't, I don't necessarily want to take the question right now, but if you want to reach out to me at the office tomorrow, I'll be available.
That's fine. There'll be February primary?
Uh, the primary is always that third week, third Tuesday of if necessary, yes.
Okay. I'm on it.
All right. Moving on. To uh pizza cage, I'm swearing in ceremony. It hurts itself. Beckland? Get it ready?
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, every community deserves only the best individuals to serve as their police officers, earning this privilege is based on a candidate's past and current personal decisions and previous job performance. Not to mention succeeding through various steps of a rigorous selection process, which includes several uh objectives, including a stakeholder interviews, medical and psychological assessment, and an investigation into the candidate's personal background. The law enforcement profession is steeped in traditions. One of those traditions is holding a swearing in and pitting ceremony after the village board appoints a candidate to serve as their community's police officer. Tonight, Eric Beckland is before you to receive his badge, a symbol of authority and trust being placed upon him by this community. And thus we ask you to stand and recite the oath of honor affirming your commitment to serving the law enforcement profession and this community with integrity.
Yeah, it's scary. Okay. Yeah, just see all the cameras. Okay. Eric, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Eric, on your honor, do you solemnly swear to never betray your integrity, your character, or the public's trust, to treat all individuals with dignity and respect, and ensure that my, your actions are dedicated to ensuring the safety of this community and the preservation of human life, to always have the courage to hold yourself and others accountable, and finally, to always maintain the highest ethical standards and uphold the values of this community and the police department, please, sir.
I do.
Congratulations, sir. Open there.
Thank you.
Eric started with us back on October twenty-seventh. Sorry, I'm like, uh, just like the village president too. I took vacation during that time, so this is the first time we could do this. Swearing in and pitting, so otherwise we would, uh, the first begins, so. Thank you, have me on board. Thank you. Next item of business, discuss and consider the Lakota Group Comprehensive Plan, RFP proposal.
Yes, so Andy Cross from the Lakota Group is online, so he can kind of answer any questions um that you guys might have. Their presentation that was presented at the planning commission is attached. The proposal that they submitted to us was attached. Um, we submitted the RFP and your guys' recommendation. About a month and a half ago, we got two from us that um Ian and I interviewed. That was between MSA and the Otter. Um, MSA is a current engineer. I did not bring them forward to the plan commission for the main reason that uh they're the same individuals that told me the last one. There were some issues that I had with the last one. Um, and I felt it was probably better to bring uh a new fresh perspective and through uh inner, through me and Andy and their, their team, it felt like a very good fit. So I don't know. Andy, do you have anything else that you want to add?
No, uh, thank you very much, Gabe. Um, I had the pleasure, well, hello, uh, uh, members of the board. Thank you for allowing me uh to attend virtually. I had the pleasure of coming to the plan commission meeting last Wednesday and met a couple of you there. And we ran through the presentation. I hope you had a chance to look through that and the proposal put a lot of work into that and are just uh, our whole team is very excited to work with you guys in updating the comprehensive plan.
Yeah. Um, the next step, you guys approved this tonight. Uh, we worked out the contract and get started.
It's the boss.
The cost theirs is not to exceed. Let me make sure I get that.
I've got it here, Gabe, if you don't.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Um. So the, uh, the cost is not to exceed seven, six, three, one, nine, seventy-six thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars. Uh, this is a very targeted project because the current comprehensive plan is only four years old. And so we will be reviewing that to see what elements are still relevant and can still be used and focusing, working with Gabe and Ian and others to figure out what really needs to be uh thought over. Specifically, we're looking at future land use for sure. Uh, use of some key corridors, improvements of gateways, the business park, and a few other items like that. So it's a very focused project.
What was the lot of in the budget for redoing the comprehensive plan?
We had fifty, thirty-five in the general fund, and we have about fifteen, so the capital or the TID, because there's, we're gonna be focusing on the TIDs, and then uh next year we will budget for it. If we do look like we are exceeding them, I will pivot to make it a capital project for next year.
And I've spoken to people from other communities and the capital, which will play in the mission. Assist with this sort of thing, and generally it's more economical.
They won't do it. They will kind of work alongside whoever it is, but I reached out to them and they declined. They said they would work with anybody, but they will not achieve the project.
So you said this was just done four years ago, and we're doing it again?
There is a lot of things that were not done appropriately in the last one, which is why the board directed staff to go out through the RFP process.
Do we have any idea then, spending this money to do this now, is this gonna take us out more than four years? Or with four years, we're gonna do this again?
No, it'll go out what we needed to do. Um, really, the large thing that we're gonna be spending a lot of time on is mapping, um, future land use mapping. Where do we want developments? Where do we want single-family, multifamily, large density, uh, commercial mixed-use developments in our jurisdictional area? Right now, if we join news map, this covers exactly what we have. And so we need to really update and think about as a village, you get all of our partners involved, and where do we want to grow? What do we want our downtown to look like? Where do we want our all three quarters, like, um, QuickTrip area and then Piggy Lively area? Where do we want that to be specialized?
And just to make sure we're looking at more than six years for our money.
So.
That's very.
MSA did the last one.
Yes.
They did it wrong.
Not wrong. I think just.
They didn't, they thought it was done. I, we're just redoing, even though it was done right.
It was bland, as Ian said, and it just didn't match with Belleville less. Was just, wasn't taking heed.
So if you review it, I mean, we've already outgrown all of the portions of that have to do with growth, the future land use map, all that. We've outgrown it already. Um, and then as far as goals, they're all very broad and vague and vanilla. Um, I mean, they meet the minimums of statute, I guess, because they hit on the bullet points they have to hit on, but they don't really give us anything that's usable. And some of the things are just crazy pants, like uh, uh, transportation utility. And I called the guy during the, I called him on it during, I recommended transportation utility, and he didn't really have a great answer, but he, he stuck to it, and that's ultimately why we're not talking about them right now. So MSA, bland or wackadoo recommendations.
Yeah.
And they're our engineer.
Yeah.
So in a correct spot. I mean, the, the comprehensive plan is something that you have to have done a certain number of years based on state statute, I think in two thousand nine. Um, with the requirement started that every community had to have a comprehensive plan, and it had to cover, I forget exactly, one, seven or so points, I've been doing housing, uh, so on, so forth. Um. And how often is that to be redone? Uh, I think it has to be redone every ten years, I think. Um, obviously, this is before that time, but like I said, we've, all of the useful portions of the current plan, we, we've outgrown.
What did that cost us?
I, I don't know. Be honest, I kind of got sticker shot with these guys, although they seem like, they seem awesome. They interview great, like their portfolio speaks for itself. I don't have any issues there, but kind of. Something I wish we could do in-house, but we just don't have the ability to do it.
Yes, that was, that was my initial reaction too, was especially considering, you know, like, our existing plan is only four years old, so even though it's not exactly what we were looking for, it certainly provides a, I would think, a pretty good starting point that, uh, you know, might help.
And it is.
Control costs some.
And it is not to exceed. So as, cause Carpsey did say that they would be going to help out where questions are. So they did, they can't do it, but they can answer questions. So between Andy, between I, between Ed, between Carpsey, like, we can't fill in the gaps, or we can't make it as as easy as possible and it's less expensive as possible. But that is just the not to exceed. Amongst that, we approved the, the Cota Group Comprehensive Plan Propose, RFP proposal. Not to exceed seventy, thirty-six, one, nine.
Yep, seven, six, three, one, nine. You've got it.
Thank you.
Motion by Gary, second by Shelley.
And this was recommended by plan commission last year, so.
Any discussion? At board? Julie?
Thank you, Michael. Um. And, you know, within the last three years, we've added the parks and trails piece to the comprehensive plan. And MSA did that. That may be remembered. And we also updated the comprehensive plan. Just shortly after date started.
We have not updated the comprehensive plan. We do comprehensive plan amendments when there's a project that doesn't match the comprehensive.
That is my problem.
Or you're talking about the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan or our strategic plan?
Both.
Yes, those are very different sets, very different projects.
But they became a part of our comprehensive plan.
Our comprehensive outdoor recreation plan did not. It is a separate plan.
And MSA, they're going to go.
I was not here when the board chose that. I finished the project, but I was not here when I started the project.
Any?
Why did you do my job wrong? Something happened. I either gave off the word, or maybe I have to pay money back. So if they didn't do their job right, tell me to get money back. Thanks and something. I think, I think you're confused.
I think, I think you're confused. MSA is the engineer. Oh, that is not just an engineer, they're developing our cap.
You can see in MSA over here.
MSA did the last.
They did the last, right, and they didn't do it right. So once they don't do it right, uh, we've outgrown it. But that's what I heard.
There are parts that we've outgrown that once we had been part of the project, they would not have been included. Does it match the current state statute? Yes. Have we completed that run it? Yes. So say it was done incorrect to get our money, like it's not to appropriate stance.
Ian, what did you say?
But.
MSA.
I agree with you. I think they're, the, the comprehensive plan they provided us is, is if there's a swing potential, it must be more on the side at bare minimum. Uh, plus, I mean, it is what it is. I have no idea how much it should have paid for it. I have no idea what the task order was.
Well, there's got to be a record seller. Yep, send the base.
Okay. All right, so we've got a motion on the floor by Gary, second by Shelley to approve the proposal not to exceed seventy-six thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars. Any other board comments? Do a roll call.
Sure. In present service.
Yes.
Trusty Bannon.
Yes.
Longard.
Yes.
Cannon.
No.
Icicle, yes. Caliphate.
Yes.
Seagull.
Yes.
Passes on a six to one.
All right, well, thank you very much. I look forward to seeing you all again and working with you on this project.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you. Next. It is, this, this resolution twenty twenty-five dash three four, of one West Main Street.
So this, we, we talked about purchasing one West Main Street. This is, you know, financially how it would work. Uh, so the money be transferred from basically the village for its budget, the capital fund, capital fund would expend for the building. Uh, this is just amending our, our food budget for twenty twenty-five, including this, it wasn't even on the radar at that time.
So you have to make a motion to, um, in twenty twenty-five budget to purchase, purchasing one West Main Street.
Okay.
Second by Debbie.
Yeah, I decided to, uh, with the building, it's buying an undesigned fund cash, no problem there at all. When we figure out exactly how much it would cost to renovate and everything, uh, we'll let to see financially what makes sense at that point.
So just going to say again that, um, I don't think this is a smart move to purchase this property for the village. It's just setting ourselves up for the same exact situation we're in right now. There's, we're, we're not moving forward. It's just swapping out one building for another. That's essentially putting us in the same situation.
Any other comments from the board? Judy.
I agree with you, Michael. But even more so. The account numbers, Ian, that you have here transferred to the capital fund, you purchased this building. I can't find either of these account numbers. In this document. I look, so I'm going, what is the name of it? Where is it located, Ian?
Well, two of them you wouldn't see in there because nothing was budgeted or expended besides, well, this, this year. So it wouldn't show up on year-to-date because there's been no activity in the accounts. The one that should show up is a, a bit facilities project, and that's a four-ten-zero-zero-fifty-seven-one-fourty number. And that should be in the capital fund because that's the same account that we've been paying the FGM architects on.
So the other two accounts where we transferred to the capital fund and then take the money from the general fund. Does it have money in it?
But like I said, nothing was originally budgeted. I mean, is there, there money in the general fund? Yes, of course, it's fine.
You're not necessarily taking it from a specific account, you're taking it from the whole account.
From, from the general fund is a transfer of money from one fund to another because the money lives in the general.
Is this thing?
Really?
Oh, we're saying again, it's, it's again savings and tax dollars to something like eight billion dollars versus remodeling or building.
I think our better plan is to wait and sit tight and see what comes out in the next two years or so and then make a decision. Uh, rather than a knee-jerk reaction to a property that's available that, uh, does not meet the needs entirely for, for our purposes. I, I don't see having meetings in separate buildings upon transaction. So.
Can I make one more comment, Michael?
Yes.
And that is having three buildings that are pieces and parts of the governance of the village. I would like to know what the increase in operations is of the three buildings. Because this is an investment by my stop, which would charge the tax. But our return on investment is we're having three buildings where we have meetings here. Majority of work is done on Main Street and twenty-five, twenty-four West Main. And now we're going to have that empty and we're going here, but we're going to have things there. So you're going to confuse everybody. I mean, to me, we're paying triple electrical, we're paying triple just operations.
Right. Yeah, yeah. So.
I'd like to see a general.
Can I make one more comment? I know I proposed a lot of ideas upfront, um, but I certainly would like to see more than one, two, three, four people in the room and give, give the public the opportunity to weigh in on this very significant decision that would last more than twenty years. And that's what I heard, that this is a long-term decision that will carry us through ten to twenty years. So I don't see any, I saw it November third, and then I was told October twentieth. Um, that was when this was discussed. Um, I certainly would like to see more public involvement. And I do not think that your reserves to understand that there's an eight million dollar savings. You do not know that. If you put investment into the current building and put it into an optimal state to then resell, then you can actually profit. So whatever money you're investing into a building that you eventually have to relocate is lost. There's no equity, there's no collateral. So that's me.
Taking taxpayers out.
But again, the proposal to remodel Village Hall, the existing Village Hall, for a high million. To build a new one should run out of ten million.
What's that? It was really public access, so that's kind of a mute conversation.
We went through that discussion. The, the extent of that remodel is ridiculous and that not able to be that extensive, especially for something short term.
Unless we're going to keep the current building and not be, be compliant, not have the security we need. That's the other option. Or to drop ten million on Village Hall behind the cemetery.
There should have been more full support refurbishing the existing Village Hall, because nine million dollars, well, basically you can level the building and put enough in.
Exactly.
For a remodel, so something doesn't jive there. Anyway, the item on the agenda is to consider, uh, basically move the money around to the, uh, wanting to repurposing one West Main. Uh, any other discussion by the board? Okay, we'll call on this one too, please.
Yep.
Snipers.
No.
Joseph Bannon.
Yes.
Longard, Phil. Cannon.
Yes.
Michael Kraut.
Yes.
Caliphate.
Yes.
Seagull.
Yes.
All right, next item of business. Discuss and consider resolution twenty twenty-five dash three five, adopting the twenty twenty-six budget and authorizing the village clerks to levy taxes.
Yeah, so the resolution that will be approved tonight is attached, as is the twenty twenty-six budget. The board members each have a hard copy budget in front of them. We also should have had a key on top of that for this building. Uh, that's why Ian and I are in our suits, uh, wear suit for budget adoption day and eval day. Really isn't any changes from last budget approval, so your last meeting. So yeah.
Motion to approve, uh, authorize the village clerk to levy taxes and adopt the twenty twenty-six budget.
That is a motion. I'll second.
Is any motion, Gary? Discussion. Judy.
I just have one question, Mike. This is for Ian. You made the comment at the last village forming that we had one point nine in the reserve fund. I did everything I could to define how you came to that number.
I'd love to know, I don't think I said that.
So as for the reserve fund, it's a projection, because we don't know how this year will end. Um, I would just hold on until the audit is back.
Because if we truly have.
I would just look at the last presentation that we presented and wait in the audit.
And the front page of local paper.
And there will be a surplus guaranteed.
I've had exactly one point done.
It was an estimate.
There was projection based on what we know at the time. There will be a surplus. Uh, the audit will provide the final numbers, um, yeah, the year reconciliation.
Yes, I don't think ever come to this number.
As Gabe said, it's projection, so. All right. Since I'm on roll, let's, let's roll the call again.
Yeah, the sound of my voice, I don't understand. All right, let's do it. Present service.
Yes.
Trusty Bannon.
Yes.
Longard, discussion. Cannon.
Yes.
Michael Kraut.
Yes.
Haslam.
Yes.
Seagull.
Yes.
Passes on a seven to zero.
When it's to be Christmas, if you don't want to not learn something, that's a video, you'll know why.
Andy. Next item, it's the resolution twenty twenty-five dash three six, adopting special assessments and special charges to be added from the twenty twenty-five tax bill.
Yeah, uh, so, uh, hopefully this is what we do every year. Uh, the local utilities, forty-nine, three dollars and ninety-two cents adds up. When this was written, again, this could change, I give people all the way until I, I have to add specials uh, to the, the tax form with the counties, uh, okay, so that, that could already go down, but it's not going to go up before it's certified. Um, sidewalk program, there are four total properties that, uh, decided not to pay in full and are taking that, that, yours that you guys want to do, at least for now. And so, uh, the twelve hundred sixty-nine dollars, um, that reflects, you know, the total of those four properties first year payment. Uh, urban forestry special charges between both counties, uh, thirty thousand, three twenty-three fifty-six and refugees and recycling, two sixty-four, five seventy-eight forty-two.
I'm, I'm hoping that we approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-six.
Second.
Hey, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed?
I don't.
Stay now. All right.
That's six, zero, one.
She passes. Discuss and consider lease agreement for the basement of the village center.
Yeah, so this is a little bit of time coming. Uh, this, a reason why it's in this way is, um, the board gave direction in the last post session to kind of go through a lease agreement based on the terms. Um, they've agreed to the terms that's laid out, so I would expect for the lease agreement for this, the basement of this building. This is between, uh, kitchens at the Bellevue Depot, which is the Depot Group, uh, right next door to us. As a reminder, the areas of the basement has a commercial kitchen. So this way, it's, I'll answer what that was.
And she's a title in here.
Sat, too big.
Open up. It's on, uh, stage seven at the bottom, section ten, subsection D, halfless standing. Is, is that one word?
I think it's a base word, but.
Yeah, it is.
It's a legal term.
All right. I just thought it was two words, I guess. I've been educated, but I went to public school. All right.
Legal ease. Don't know what.
I mean, there is something else.
So I, you know, I was happy to see that the boss shared.
Yep.
So that, that was good.
Purple hat, right?
Yeah.
All right, I'm hoping that we approve the commercial lease agreement for one thirty South Line Street.
Second. Page. Motion by Gary, second by myself. Board, any other comment, question? Clarification? Judy.
Where is the lease market going to? How is it going to be used?
Um, I mean, it'll be deposited probably into the facilities budget and then how it's used to go in general funds. I'm assuming a lot of it's going to go towards the original building.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We know that lease would start.
We. Judy.
Number.
Sure, Scott. December twenty twenty-five.
New business. Consider a CDA grant application for thirty West Main Street.
Normally this does not come before the village board. The CDA has a facade grant budget line item in their own budget of ten thousand dollars. Uh, why it is coming to you is they are out of that fund, not to their own, but we gave the same, uh, developer, um, a seventy-five hundred dollar grant at the end of last year to go out of last year's budget. Due to the timeframe that it was done, it actually was taken out of the twenty twenty-five, but it's considered the twenty twenty-four budget, which left the CDA with twenty-five hundred dollars left. They have approved their twenty-five hundred dollars. They're asking the village board to approve the other twenty-five hundred dollars out of the village boards. Normally this wouldn't come to you because it's their own discretionary. Yes, it is because they, um, due to an accounting, it, they grant outside.
Where's the money going for?
What?
Where is the money going for?
Um, the brick and the sod. So this is the building that's right next to village hall. So getting the windows in, the, the cost of just back portion of the project and the brickwork, the windows.
What's going in that building?
Um, on the closest to the village hall site is the, um, the current, uh, realtor. And then in the middle is his, um, office, and then on the right side is Amlat. He's using that for their office space. Amlat's the, um, dairy producer that's kind of, um, in the middle of Main Street. So, but he's signed them all to, I think, one year leases, so if something that comes in, they can. And what he's done is he's opened up that middle section, so there will be a new door there that wasn't there with the last. So he brought it to how it used to be, used to be.
Wasn't the CDA chairman just telling us that it's a really hot real estate market downtown, so it shouldn't require subsidization?
I can't speak frankly.
I'm just saying, if someone's going to snatch up a pharmacy or like that, clearly we don't need to subsidize.
It's a program we have available and it's exclusive to specific areas of the legislature. This, this was available.
I'll make a motion that we approve the CDA grant application of twenty-five hundred in the village to pay the other twenty-five hundred to be paid sales.
I'll second that.
Deb, second by Debbie. Connie?
I don't understand all this subsidizing stuff, but that money is not to help them. It's, what I want to say, if you saw the front of Borland's, that's what Borland's money.
Yeah.
And J M, so J M's did with their money. That's, we wanted Main Street to look better, so the CDA was, we all came up with. We were going to give money so they could fix, and it's only, it's not very much money. It's only thirty dollars, you know?
But you're giving the total of the prices.
And you're doing right.
It's corporate, uh, you're paying the business. You know, you're paying, the public is paying the business bills.
Well, what are you doing for Petri?
I don't disagree.
Okay, so twenty-five hundred dollars is nothing.
It was originally put in place in order to try to revitalize Main Street, especially when it was struggling.
Yes.
And, you know, you could make an argument that, you know, some of that money has actually shown some fruits with, uh, top garden and things going in and businesses returning. Um, you know, from, from when I was on some of these committees, it was hard to get people to actually come up and apply to take this money. You know, for trying to hand it out when they didn't want to, no one was showing up. So, uh, I believe that's how it usually happens, so.
Try to sign the parking spot on Main Street on Saturday night, no, so.
Yeah.
The money was kept.
There's not enough money in it.
There's not enough. When we had it, it was fired. We gave five hundred eighty-five. We're down to.
Okay, so we have a motion by, uh, Deb, second by Debbie to approve the grant.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed?
Nope.
She passes. Next item of business, discuss and consider rezoning application for four oh nine Blizzard Drive and three seventy-five Sugar Ave. Must be the corner there, right? It's where I'm at. To be changed.
That, I'm sorry, that should be five oh nine and three seventy-six. Not sure what happened. With the, we're, um, eventually four oh nine and three seventy-five are coming during this process. Uh, we switched it around. I believe the application in the, the cash was for that guy before. I didn't. Apparently, it is three seventy-sixty-five money is what we're, um, and the ordinance and should also be have a correct. People, um, I'm sorry, I gotta stop talking to him.
No, it's not. John Bremmer remains, or at least four separate properties, uh, right in that area. They're, they're all duplexes, they're already built. Um, he's been renting them out for some time. Um, at this point, I think he's just, uh, slowly matured. It's like I said, he's been pouring in. Four applications in at the same times, but only one could go forward with one. Um, basically just turning them into, uh, condos. So, uh, like I said, it's two different ideas, there's the driveways coming up, two different roads. Um, approved by planning commission along with the certified survey map that would effectively make it a zero plot line, two separate taxable parcels. Um, and what now is one parcel less part of that is just the rezon thing. Do they have an association?
Not, not right now.
Properties are joined.
Yep.
And so there needs to be some sort of legal agreement.
Correct.
That doesn't involve the village, assuming that two separate people buy into that, because there would have to be agreement between the two owners.
But if we prove it without an agreement in place.
That doesn't include, that doesn't include the village.
Uh, that, uh, agreement's not under, not under our purview. Um, so right now, we could approve everything as is. It could be two separate taxable parcels and this market owner for the next ten years, twenty years, and, and not do anything differently. Um, if he chooses to sell to one side, at that point, the expectation would be that he would, uh, follow the rules. I mean, that would be due diligence from the title company to make sure that there's restricted covenants on it, so that both sides are responsible for the maintenance of the one structure. I mean, I'd feel a lot better if it was a agreement existed in place, so we didn't end up with a mess down the road. Uh, no, I, I mean, I, I get it, but I'd, like I said, it's, it's not under our purview. Well, the table and subsidence and agreement, some sort of legal agreement was created. It's not our purview. It's, what man said, it's not something to base our decision off of.
We, this ordinance just changes zoning of that parcel. It doesn't do anything else. The CSM that was approved by planning commissions could probably be contingent on, on the rezon. Have you guys approved any ordinance that rezoned it? But the only thing that you guys need to choose to vote on tonight would be the actual zoning of that parcel.
Tom, would we approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twelve?
Second.
Gary, second by Debbie. Elliot, sorry.
It's okay.
And repeated. So, looking at a map quick, talking about. Hey, on the board discussion. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed?
No.
You're opposed, opposed. It's a double negative. All right, motion passes six to one. Next item, discuss and consider Heritage Trail Development Task Order.
Yeah, so this is a, uh, kid project. You have already approved the project, uh, already taken the money out. That was the, uh, debt that we took out earlier this year, the, uh, taxable, non-taxable, uh, notes. Um, this is the task order for engineers to design and get the trail. This was recommended by the Parks Committee.
We motion that we approve the Heritage Trail Development Task.
Second, Debbie, second by Scott. Sorry.
We have to put a fee in there, not take CD ninety-beltson.
The task order, the cover.
Say when, okay, start date, November, this month.
Yes.
Right. Leashing by September next year. Right. Judy?
I have a problem with this, but I get an estimate for ninety thousand. And I got a verbiage of what they're going to do. And then my last page is all their team. You know? I want to know each part of this project, whatever the board is going to assign of this ninety thousand.
You should probably ask Kim Ned.
But you're approving it tonight.
It's already been approved. We're just approving the task order.
To me, you gotta know more than just an estimate. MSA is known for coming back with change orders. And they're probably always ends up more expensive than what the last three procedures.
All right, any board discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? She passed seven to zero. Next item, discuss and consider resolution twenty twenty-five third dash three seven, twenty twenty-six capital projects reimbursements.
It's another thing we do every year, just the way we do capital here. Um, generally, we pay cash for things and then we dispose ourselves of the debt issues necessary. Uh, in order to do that, and, uh, tax exempt issuers, we have to have a resolution. We're intending to do so before we spend any money. We didn't three months of spend. I, I, I rest, so that's what we're doing. So the intent is that, you know, at the most advantageous spot next year, when we kind of, that's a good idea of what we are and are not going to carry out our, our capital, uh, funding expenditures. We'll go ahead and push you to debt or successful cash.
I'm going to approve the resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven.
Second. Yeah.
Motion by Gary, second to fast. Discussion. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Right, reports, we need development.
Yeah, so that's me. Um, we did change the E, CDA meeting minutes, or meeting to right before the Parks Committee meeting. That allows us, from last night meeting, that doesn't have a meeting following it. Um, really was just a grant application for thirty West Main.
Uh, Biden Street, it comes to, we discussed that at the time, and we'll can add, I think we approved it.
Well, we were in the bidding process. The board had already, you guys had provided comments that if we could, we could move the seating area away from the parking lot and to closer to the river, the kind of the park area, not in that area, but just closer to it. Um, we were able to do that, so they are in the bidding process, MSA is for the construction. But we're guessing, and we hope, is that Cory C, who are doing the other two projects, can just do this project to save us some money in their time. Is it all?
The Heritage Track, as far as register. For example, the drive it and we're all. Now, updates.
No, we have a potential idea that I think.
Go back to partisan culture.
Yeah.
Why? Also, though, we are, there are several events, had some updates in Mary Brine and the Picky Walk. And we're, um, hoping to discuss with community club about, um, by when we can incorporate the hundred seventy-five and, and next year's event, so.
So we're keeping on speaking and giving an idea of, I think we were thinking maybe putting that on the next person calls or committee meeting next month. Then we can come and, and keep that, get the ball rolling on that.
I was going to ask you about that.
Yeah.
Otherwise, that's it.
Please?
We, um, we have officer views and cabinet views and will be dealing with.
Library.
Nothing.
And planning commission.
Plan commission, couple items, and I, we looked at several CUPs, we did a couple, uh, preliminary site plan for a couple of proposed, uh, multifamily, properties on the south side of town, talked about some ordinances. I don't know, I'm pointing at, that was pretty good for a three-page agenda, so, um, being, I think, the plan commission is going to continue to be busy here, so.
And thanks for running that one for me.
No problem.
Hey. Newslines. Village maintenance calendar.
When is the P. wall?
Uh, the first Saturday, first of September. Yeah, thank you. Uh, six and. E, that I can.
Yes, 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 yeah.
So. Lots of actually really good events from the community that, that has a foot on our calendar, so if you check the village website, I know there's a Thanksgiving dinner, some other things on there as well that I might want to check out. If anybody wants to put their community event on the village calendar, they, oh, there's a, uh, app, not an application, but there's a way to contact us, give us that information. We're happy to. Give the hope for that.
Yeah. I know.
I have a question five miles back, but you're in Seaman. Why, when it's a dumb water, maybe it's a dumb question, but we didn't know what was. I'm this tree thing and the whatever it all is, why are almost all women on there, you know, the men that hold the house with the women? Why is that? That is special for years.
Yeah, like tree tax.
Yeah, why, why is, why is that?
Probably a question.
Right? We've danced that. I know I said, but I was waving my hand. I said long time ago, because we danced that a couple of years ago. It's not my question. Mike, I don't give a ding about a tree tax. It's not a tree tax. Anyways, why is there, maybe your name is in there in one style. I'm just asking why it's all women. That's all. I say several questions.
They don't know what you're talking about.
No clue.
This, right, of course.
So, yeah, but, but, I mean, so it's the assessment role. It comes straight from the assessor. So I, I just cut out the, the columns I don't need from it. I keep the columns with the, the improved values and the acreage and all the stuff I do need. That comes directly from the assessor.
Okay, whole town's full of women, everything and no men. I got everything.
Increasingly, yes.
There's a lot of guys that people have me.
That was my question.
I don't know. It's on my name on there, so.
Except. Mike, I think you actually have a question.
I'm sorry, you have a question. If I'm going in close session, um, white oak builders, sixty-nine development, is that the Petri Slam across from Big League?
It is, yes.
One new thing with this new building, uh, close sessions are actually going to be across the hall, so if you guys do want to stay, you're more than welcome to. Uh, with this, I think, outside.
I guess I don't, so you guys come back and discuss what's your.
I don't, yes, if there's a motion, that's a game.
So, yeah, well, we walk over to the other room now.
You gotta use.
They don't know things that I.
Yes, the nature power. We have something to.
So, uh. Yeah. All those are probably in board, going to attempt to, that, and it concerns the Wisconsin statute nineteen dot eight-five subsection one, subsection C. Consider employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation of, of any public employee with which the governmental body has jurisdiction, exercise responsibility. The College Board may reconvene into possession and take. The College Board may reconvene into session and take action on that subject matter designated closed session. And to play among this, discuss and consider patrol officer of employment to Zachary Anderson.
It changes. Please, we're going to have.
The village development will enter into a closed session pursuant to the Wisconsin statute nineteen dot eight five subsection one subdivision E. The purposes of biller rays are to negotiate and purchase public properties, invest in public funds, or invest in other specific facilities whenever competitive or bargaining is in session. It is for an open session and take action on subject matters as imposed. The two items discussed consider the development agreement between the village of Belleville and Belleville Depot LLC. And discussing consider the development agreement between the village of Belleville and White, White Oak Home Builders for the Highway sixty nine development. It would entertain a motion.
Motion, you want a close second? Second.
Let me, Tony, second.
Tony, are you gone or still moving? Yeah.
Hold on.
Uh, service.
Yes.
Damon.
Yes.
Hunger.
Yes.
Shannon.
Yes.
I could grab, yes.
Yes.
And we are in closed session at seven eleven. Okay, cheers.
Game should put together ten chicks.
I will make a motion to proceed with the hiring of Zachary Anderson at the specified contractors details. Second. Tony, all those in favor?
I have.
Opposed? Some passes.
You know if it ends there. Yes, discussing closed session.
This one is agreement to undertake the development.
Both of those are as discussed in closed session.
Yep. So make a motion to approve the development agreement. Belleville Depot LLC is discussed in closed session.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. And I will just continue to make the motion to approve the Highway 69 development agreement as discussed in closed session.
Hang on, you got hand signals going.
Yeah.
They don't approve that. That was just a review today.
Does it continue with reviewing it? I thought we were supposed to vote.
Yeah.
With your iron that motion.
I was trying to figure out the hand signals going over there.
The first one was fine, this one.
You made the motion to adjourn? I'll second it.
Your wording's adjournments wrong again, it's okay. I'm gonna go home and get my stuff.
I want to entertain. I make a motion to adjourn.
Send that against call.
It's your meeting. All those in favor? Opposed, very adjourned.
Thank you.